Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection.
We will now salute the flag. I pleads allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice is forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. This time we are on to a public hearing. A public hearing regarding issues regarding bids submitted by Wallace Brothers, Inc. for construction of new fire department headquarters.
Okay. Thank you everybody for being here today. Usually myself as the mayor runs the meeting. This being the first for me and the entire council. I'm going to ask our very competent city attorney, Mr. Frederick Ruffetto, to be running the meeting. So Fred.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is Frederick C. Ruffetto, and I'm with the law firm of Hill Walling. I serve as general counsel to the city of Asbury Park, and I'm also known as the city attorney. The mayor has asked me to take the lead with regard to today's special meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the mayor and council to conduct a public hearing and potentially to engage in deliberations concerning issues related to the bidder that was awarded the contract for the new fire department headquarters project on February 27, 2023. By way of background, the city of Asbury Park received and opened sealed bids on Wednesday, February 22, 2023, for the new fire department headquarters. Ten bids were received on that date from interested contractors for this project. On February 27, 2023, the mayor and council held a special council meeting in order to award the bid associated with this matter. The lowest bid had been submitted by Wallace Brothers, Inc., with an address of 400 Chambers Bridge Road, Brick, New Jersey, 08723. At that meeting, the mayor and council adopted Resolution Number 2023-144, which awarded the bid and contract for the project to Wallace Brothers, Inc. in the amount of $18,084,000, representing the base bid, and deducting alternate number one, representing the training tower, and also deducting alternate number two, representing the community room. Shortly after the special meeting was held, the city was made aware of certain allegations and information which may have affected the determination made by the mayor and council that Wallace Brothers, Inc. represented the lowest responsible bidder for the project. Pursuant to the New Jersey Local Public Contracts Law, and specifically NJSA 40A:11-4, every contract for the provision or performance of any goods or services, the cost of which in the aggregate exceeds the contracting unit's bid threshold, must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. The within contract well exceeds the city's bid threshold. Therefore, it must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder by law. The Local Public Contracts Law defines the term "responsible" as follows: Responsible means able to complete the contract in accordance with its requirements, including but not limited to requirements pertaining to experience, moral integrity, operating capacity, financial capacity, credit, workforce, equipment, and facilities availability. And that definition is found at NJSA 40A:11-2 (32) and parentheses. That definition was also included as part of the city's bid specifications at Section 5.5.1. With regard to the allegations made concerning Wallace Brothers, Inc., the city has heard from other bidders, as well as from labor union representatives, who have filed protests following the award of the bid. The specific issue that was brought forward, which caused the mayor and council to determine to hold today's hearing, relates to the response provided by Wallace to question number seven on the statement of experience and qualifications, as included in its bid package, which was at page 73 of 90. That question reads as follows: Number seven: In the past three years, have there been any outstanding debts over 60 days to subcontractors, for material and equipment suppliers, for work in place on any of your contracts, other than the maximum allowance of 2% retainage? If so, how much and why? Wallace answered no to that question. However, the information that has been provided to the city suggests that this response may not have been accurate and/or may have constituted a misrepresentation. The mayor and council believe that this issue is material and relevant to the determination as to whether Wallace constitutes the lowest responsible bidder pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-2 (27) and NJSA 40A:11-2 (32) and NJSA 40A:11-4, along with Section 5.5.1 of the city's bid specifications. Therefore, before proceeding with contract execution, the mayor and council determined to set this matter down for a hearing in order to allow a representative of Wallace to explain under oath Wallace's position as to its response to question number seven. Importantly, though this hearing was called primarily to review the issue regarding Wallace's response to question number seven, since we are conducting a hearing as to Wallace's "responsibility" as a bidder, there may be questions raised concerning other matters that are relevant to the determination as to whether Wallace constitutes the lowest responsible bidder. As to the conduct of the hearing, on behalf of the city, I will take the lead to elicit testimony from Mr. Steve Wallace, who is the president of Wallace Brothers, Inc., and who was invited to attend this meeting today. Mr. Wallace executed his company's bid proposal. I will then offer the council members the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Wallace if they so choose. I will then afford Mr. Wallace's attorney, who I believe is here in the audience today, the opportunity to ask any follow-up questions of Mr. Wallace if he so chooses. Finally, at the conclusion of the question and answer period, I will afford either Mr. Wallace and/or his attorney the opportunity to provide any final or summary comments to the mayor and council concerning this matter if they wish. Once the hearing has closed, the public will then be afforded the opportunity to address the mayor and council. We will have a regular open comment, public comment period, as we do at all council meetings. Issues that can be brought forward at that time may concern matters that were raised during today's hearing or about any other issues that any member of the public may wish to address. Speakers will be reminded that the city affords each speaker with a period of up to three minutes per speaker to address the mayor and council. Following the conduct of today's hearing, the council will determine whether to proceed with the contract as awarded to Wallace or whether to proceed in a different direction. That determination may or may not be finally determined today. Specifically, if the council determines that in its discretion Wallace is not the lowest "responsible" bidder, then the council may determine to rescind the award of the bid to Wallace and to award the contract to the next low bidder. In anticipation of today's hearing, I contacted Mr. Wallace by letter dated March 10, 2023, to advise him that the mayor and council wished to hold this hearing. The hearing was originally scheduled to be held on March 17, 2023, but it was adjourned until today. With that, I would like to request Mr. Steve Wallace to come forward so that he may address the mayor and council at this time. And his attorneys welcome to join. Ready. Okay, Mr. Wallace, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Can you please state your name for the record and spell your last?
Steve Wallace, W-A-L-L-A-C-E.
Can you please state your professional title with the company Wallace Brothers, Inc.?
President of Wallace Brothers Incorporated.
How long have you served in that capacity?
Thirty-seven years.
And how long has Wallace Brothers, Inc. been in existence?
Since 1986.
What is the company's corporate address?
400 Chambers Bridge Road, Brick, New Jersey.
And who are the principals that are shareholders or owners of the business?
Myself.
Are you the sole shareholder?
Yes, yep.
How is Wallace Brothers, Inc. related to Wallace Contracting, Inc., which has the same Brick, New Jersey, address?
That's the company I'm also president of.
And how long have you served as president of Wallace Contracting, Inc.?
I'd have to get back to that. I'm not sure when that was incorporated. Wallace Contracting hasn't done any business for 10 years, 15 years.
But the entity is still in existence?
Yes, it is.
Are there any other principals or shareholders of Wallace Contracting, Inc. besides yourself?
No.
Mr. Wallace, you and I engaged in several email communications before you retained counsel to represent you regarding this matter. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And do you recall my asking you whether either of the Wallace corporate entities that we just identified, that are located in Brick, New Jersey, has any connection whatsoever to a third Wallace entity known as Wallace General Contracting, LLC, with an address of 3525 Quaker Bridge Road, Suite 903B in Hamilton, New Jersey?
Yes.
And what was your response?
We have no connection with them. We don't know who they are.
For the record, I'm going to read what I consider to be the term "connection", and this is exactly what I emailed you during our communications. The word "connection" would include the following: Number one, common owners, partners, officers, managers, employees, agents, consultants, or representatives. Number two, sharing premises, office space, equipment, supplies, telephone or fax numbers, email addresses, internet websites, et cetera. Number three, employing or engaging any person involved in the direction or control of the other. Number four, sharing fees/revenues from projects performed. Or number five, any other connection whatsoever. For the record, can you please advise as to whether either of the two Wallace entities based in Brick has any connection, as I just defined that term, to Wallace General Contracting, LLC in Hamilton, New Jersey?
There's no connection.
Now, I'd like to show you your bid submission for the Asbury Park Fire Department Headquarters Project. And specifically, if you could flip to page 73 of 90, I believe I've tabbed that page for your convenience. And I'd like to direct your attention to question number seven on the statement of experience and qualifications. Could you kindly read that question aloud?
It says, "In the last three years, have there been any outstanding debts over 60 days to subcontractors or material and equipment suppliers for work in place of any of your contracts, other than the maximum allowance of 2% retainage? If so, how much and why?"
And could you now please read the answer that you incorporated as part of your bid response?
No. Yes, I can read it. The answer is...
The answer was no. Mr. Wallace, when you submitted your bid for the Asbury Park project, did you provide a listing of various projects that Wallace Brothers, Inc. had previously completed?
Yes, what we did was we gave you a package that we give to all the owners, which includes pretty much all of the projects we've done, probably the last 10 years.
And was one of those projects the Ocean County College Performing Arts Academy?
Yes, it was.
And what was the approximate dollar amount of that contract, if you recall?
I want to say $21 million.
So the dollar amount of that project was somewhat similar to the dollar amount of the Asbury Park project? Is that a fair statement?
Well, it was a little less, and it was in $19 or $20, $18. So it'd be substantially more than that.
Was one of the subcontractors on that job, known as GBI, Inc., doing business as Thermal Piping?
Yes.
And did GBI, also known as Thermal, file a lawsuit relating to that project?
Yes.
I'm going to show you a copy of that complaint. Is this what I'm showing you? The complaint relating to the GBI/Thermal lawsuit?
I would say it is. I don't have... I don't think I brought a copy of it with me, but...
Can you represent for the record that you got this from the New Jersey Judiciary Resubstance?
Yes, I can represent that for the record. Could you kindly scroll to page five of the complaint that I just gave you? And could you read the date that the complaint was signed?
Page five?
Yes.
Well, the date on page five is June 30, 21.
And now, could you go back to page two and read paragraph six of the complaint aloud?
"All the work required by plaintiff was completed on July 12, 2020."
And then if you could read the next paragraph? That's okay, the next paragraph too.
Page six. "Plaintiff Thermal completed contract yet. Despite demand, Thermal was not paid in full. Contract amount due in owing $86,058.20, which has been due and owing since July 12, 2020."
July 12, 2020, which was approximately one year prior to when the complaint was signed?
Correct.
Given what you just read, can you please explain the circumstances of this matter?
I have emails here from Thermal Piping in April of 2021, discussing the problems with AHU-1 and the fact that they were still trying to get it fixed.
Do you want to explain what an AHU-1 is?
AHU-1, it was the air handler for a building... It was the air handler for the fine arts building at Ocean County College, which serviced probably about half of the building. And we found out... We turned the building over to the owner in January. We found out in probably November that the unit was defective and it froze.
Can you do years, Fred? Just say the years, just so we have a...
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty... This is... Well, 2019.
Okay.
I'm sorry. In April... Or not April, I'm sorry. In November of 2019, there was a problem with the unit, and it froze. The reason it froze was it wasn't manufactured correctly. The reason it wasn't manufactured correctly was because the shop drawings weren't drawn correctly. It went around... You have to understand, too, this is COVID. Now, we're into 2020, and we're into COVID. We tried to open the building. It was... Thank God, it was the cold air coil that froze. It wasn't the heat. So we could maintain heat in the building, but we had no air conditioning. It went on for... I think we finally got it settled probably in June of 21, when the unit was actually repaired. And it was satisfactorily repaired. And then we got it up and running. We air-conditioned the building. Once we knew that everything was working properly, we released the money to Thermal. This book has all of the emails and all the correspondence going back and forth into 2021.
From a review of the public records on file with the court, it appears that a stipulation of dismissal with prejudice was filed by the parties in the matter in or about December of 2021. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure what "with prejudice" means. Stephen's there.
It just meant that the matter was finally and completely resolved.
Okay, yes.
And can you tell us how the matter was resolved?
Run the check. Once we knew the unit was operating correctly, and it was repaired correctly, and was signed off by the engineer and the owner, we wrote the check.
And was the check for the amount that was demanded? Or was there any reduction as part of negotiations?
I didn't hold that money back up. He fixed the unit. The unit was... It took a long time to do it, but you know what? He fixed it. He completed his contract, and he was paying for it.
Can you tell us why you didn't identify this matter in your response to question number seven, when the events that you're describing appear to have transpired over the last three-year period?
Well, it was a dispute. It wasn't a debt. It was a dispute. We didn't owe him money until he fixed it. And when he fixed it, we paid him.
All right, now moving on to the second subcontractor lawsuit that I'm going to reference during this afternoon's hearing, was another one of Wallace's subcontractors on the Ocean County College Performing Arts Academy project known as Intex Commercial Door Systems.
Yes, yes.
I'm now going to provide you with a copy of the complaint that we obtained from the judiciary regarding the Intex matter. So for the record, Intex filed a lawsuit against Wallace Contracting, Inc., Wallace Brothers, Inc., and Stephen Wallace, yourself individually. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Could you please scroll to page five and read paragraph 32 of the complaint aloud?
32. "At this time, defendants have not contacted Intex or counsel for Intex to resolve the outstanding balance totally $32,210.38, not including benefits."
And can you tell us what material or work did Intex provide to you as a sub on this project?
They were responsible for the doors, hardware, just supplying it. They didn't install, we installed it. They supplied the doors and hardware.
And based upon what you just read about an alleged outstanding balance of $32,210.38 that was not paid, can you please describe the circumstances regarding this matter?
There were a lot of problems with the doors, which is all documented here. There were doors that weren't properly manufactured. There were doors that were damaged in shipment. And it was also... They were also responsible for the hardware that was required for the access. They had electronic hinges. They had... The doors had to be wired for electronic hinges. We found out that the doors weren't wired for electronic hinges. And there was a lot of work that was done by other subcontractors on the job, specifically the electrician, who had a back charge in excess of $20,000. Also, our man had to do a lot of additional work. And also, we never got... Well, we did eventually get the correct doors, and the damaged doors were replaced. But I don't believe that happened until probably the summer of '21. So again, we withheld their final payment until they cleaned up everything, got everything to us. And then we negotiated with them because there were back charges in excess of $32,000 from the subcontractors on the job.
The matter was finally resolved in this case as well. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So the litigation is no longer pending? Is that correct?
The holidays were settled in '21. I think it was somewhere in '21.
And when you made final payment, was it the amount that was demanded? Or was it some lower figure than that?
I think they split the back charges, and we settled somewhere in the middle.
Now, if I could refer your attention once again back to your bid package. And it's that same page, page 73 of 90. If you could read question number eight aloud?
"In the past three years, have there been any liens placed on any projects attributed to your contract? Or have there been any attempts to have any liens placed on any project attributed to your contract? If so, please explain the circumstances."
And what was your response to that question?
No.
Now, if you could refer back to the Intex complaint once again. And if you could flip to page five. And if you could read paragraph 27, the allegation contained in paragraph 27 of that complaint.
"On or around May 6, 2020, Intex filed a mechanic's lien claim against the Florence for OCC renovation with Susan West Winchester, executive vice president of Finance Administration at Ocean County College."
So was a mechanic's lien filed on that project?
Well, probably three-quarters of the contractor filed a mechanic's lien. When you start a contract, if you don't file a mechanic's lien, you know, they're putting the owner on notice that they're performing work on the project.
Given that Intex alleged that a mechanic's lien was filed, why didn't you identify that in your response to paragraph eight?
Well, it doesn't say mechanic's lien. It says any liens. To me, I interpret a lien as a lien, not a mechanic's lien. A mechanic's lien is filed by just about every contractor on the job. Well, they filed a claim, a suit.
Okay. Moving on to the last subcontractor lawsuit, was another one of Wallace's contractors on the Ocean County College Performing Arts Academy project known as Earl Asphalt Company, Inc.?
Yes.
And did Earl Asphalt Company, Inc. file a lawsuit relating to that project?
Yes.
I'm now going to give you a copy of the Earl complaint. And once again, I'll represent that this was obtained from judicial records. And if you could scroll to page four and read paragraphs 19 and 20.
"Based upon the asphalt quantities, EAC submitted to Wallace a payment requisition seeking $67,207.52 (excuse me) requisition for paving and striping work it performed under the subcontract. To date, Wallace has failed and continues to refuse to release the subcontract balance to EAC."
Okay, Mr. Wallace, given what you just read, can you please explain the circumstances of this matter?
We signed an agreement with Earl to perform an overlay at the college. The reason we signed it with Earl was the college was building... Two parking lots were the college at the time. The work that we were doing was minimal compared to what they had to do for the college. And we just felt it'd be easier if we just used the same contractor and let him do the whole project, complete the whole project. Earl came down. They completed... They changed, actually changed the date of the construction. And this was also, you know, there was problems because of COVID, and we didn't have men down there every day. And we weren't on site when he did the work. After he did the work, he claimed that the area was larger than what we had given him a contract for, and therefore, he was entitled to the additional money. We asked him to come down to the job to field measure the area that he did, which he refused to do, which we have emails. And he refused to come down and field measure the area. We actually did it ourselves, and we calculated it to be less than what his contract was for. He then came back, and he gave us load tickets from his plans that he claimed were used on our project that were in excess of his contract, and that's what he based his claim on. We paid him for the contract, and the claim was settled for the additional money, and I believe we split the baby. He wanted, I think, $12,000. I think we settled for $6,000 or $7,000.
And once again, why didn't you identify this issue when you answered question number seven about any outstanding debts for over 60 days to subcontractors?
It was a claim, wasn't it? It was a dispute, rather, not a debt. We paid him for the contract. The only thing we didn't pay for was the additional money he was asking for. And the only reason he got paid was because it was more expensive to fight him than pay him.
Okay, and looking still at the Earl Asphalt complaint, if you could go to paragraph 22 of the complaint, which I believe is on page four.
Five.
Five. And if you could just read that aloud?
"On or about August 9, 2020, EAC filed a notice of municipal mechanic's lien claim with OCC in the amount of $67,207.52."
And once again, why didn't you identify this mechanic's lien when you responded to question number eight about whether any liens had been placed on the project?
Again, it was a dispute. I don't know. It was a dispute. It was settled. I mean, does that question... What did the question ask?
It's question number eight.
Yeah, it says liens. These are mechanic's liens. I mean, I would interpret that question as, you know, is there an outstanding lien against any of your projects and any of the owner's property? Which there's not.
And if you could finally read question number nine?
This is August 2020. The question refers to the past three years. This is over three years ago.
Understood. So if you could kindly read question number nine on page 73 of the bid package? Would you kindly read it aloud?
"Have all payments associated with past labor costs been paid in full to the proper authorities as required by law or agreement? If not, please explain the circumstances."
And what was your response?
Yes, we paid everybody.
Has your company ever been adjudicated to have committed wage and hour violations in any proceeding held before the State Department of Labor?
I'm sure if you go back 25 years, you know, I'm sure there was a clerical violation somewhere.
Have there been any violations adjudicated within the last three years against your company?[1779.54]
No.
Are there any active wage and hour cases involving your company currently pending right now before the Department of Labor?
Well, you guys made me aware of that. There's three cases that wage and hour, they can't tell me what they're for. But what I did do was I contacted Ms. Toni Longo. She's the Assistant Director of Wage and Hour and Contract Compliance. She sent me this email and she also told me if there's any questions that the board can contact her directly if you still have questions. And it says, as per our conversation held on Friday, March twenty-third, which is when I got it. I didn't get it until Friday afternoon. And she hasn't had a chance to look at these cases yet.
Can you give us that name again?
Toni, T-O-N-I, with an I, Longo, L-O-N-G-O. She's Assistant Director of Wage and Hour, Contract Compliance, New Jersey Department of Labor. I spoke with her about these cases. The first case, that was a request for our apprentice program, the CR two five oh eight eight two dash two-three. That was a request by the state. They would needed a copy of our certificate for our apprentice program, which we've sent them and that's cleared up. The other three cases, nobody seems to be able to get a handle on. Nobody's, nobody at the Department of Labor can tell me what those cases reference. However, Ms. Longo sent me an email and said, as per our conversation held on Friday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. To date, we have not substantiated any violations on case number CR two five oh eight eight two dash twenty-three, PC one seven eight dash zero seven one nine PCS, PC one seven eight dash zero seven one nine LAC, and PC one eight one dash zero seven one nine dash LAC. The disposition on the cases have yet to be determined. If you have any further questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me directly. There are no violations against Wallace, nor will there be.
For the record, is either Wallace Brothers, Inc. or Wallace Contracting, Inc. out of Brick, New Jersey listed on the state's debarred list?
No.
Has either of those entities ever been listed on the state's debarred list?
No.
At this point, I'd like to offer any member of the city council with the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Wallace if they so choose.
I have a question. Good afternoon. When you answered no, was there a space for you to, like, if you would have said yes, there were liens? Or you could have explained?
Yeah, we would have added, you know, an additional sheet. We would have said yes, and please see attached. We would have added a sheet. However, the way this this question is framed, my interpretation of this question is, do you owe anybody money for any reason in the last three years and now you're not paying them? And when you have a dispute, which is common, you know, nobody likes disputes, but they are common in the construction business. We had three disputes which went back, I mean, you could argue that these go back further than three years, but they were about three years old. We had three disputes and we settled them. And when they were, they were all for defective, or two of them for defective work and one was for overbilling on the contract. Once the work, we were satisfied the work was corrected, we paid them, just like we would do for you. If there was effective work on your job, we would withhold all the money until we had the contractor correct the work and everyone was satisfied it was corrected, and then we would pay them. And that's why we didn't look at any of this as debts. These weren't debts because it wasn't completed work. It doesn't become a debt until the work's complete.
But did you have an opportunity to ask a question maybe of the city manager or attorney while you were filling this out to, you know, you know, I have, there are some things that, you know, in my past, can I, should I put this here? Because this is my interpretation of this question.
Well, I will say this, we probably bid anywhere from four to eight projects a month. No one's ever questioned that. You're the first ones to bring this up.
Right, but if, I mean, if for you to be the, to try to get this position or get this bid, I think transparency is very important, even though maybe no one else has asked you.
I do understand your concerns. However, I don't believe I misrepresented. I believe I answered the question correctly.
Thank you.
When you keep, you keep saying a dispute, not a debt, but it resulted in a court filing and some sort of adjudication process. I guess I'm not like, not really understanding. When you say no to those questions, there was a court filing and an adjudication process that resulted in you paying somebody something?
Well, they filed to protect their position. They knew they weren't going to get paid. All of these guys knew they weren't going to get paid. They knew that there was a process. I mean, the one guy for thermal piping, for instance, that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment. That was manufactured. That was sitting on top of the building. That was supplying heat for probably half of the building. So being in the contracting business, if you looked at that, that could be a major problem. You may have to shut the building down or have to supply temporary heat to pull that unit off to fix it. Now luckily, we circumvented that and we were able to fix the unit without taking it off the building. And because of COVID, the building was closed for a certain period of time, which allowed us to do that. Typically, that would have been a big, big problem. And there's, none of these contractors that bid on this job would have dispersed any money until it was completed. And I don't believe I owe anybody any money until they do their job. And that's why I say dispute.
Well, then let me ask, so thermal, we'll just use them because you brought them up. They're saying they finished the job in twenty twenty. And then, but this process went on until July of twenty twenty-one. So when you say they fixed it, we paid them, I don't understand what that means if they had to file.
I can show you emails going back and forth in twenty twenty-one between the owner of the
When did they fix it? Did they fix it in twenty twenty?
No.
Okay.
They didn't find the problem until twenty nineteen, until the end of twenty nineteen, till the word there was twenty nineteen. I have emails from the owner in twenty twenty-one where he's going back and forth trying to figure out how to fix this thing. I know that, obviously I'm not an attorney, but I know that a lot of times I hear that they file these things to protect their position. If they don't file it and a year and a half goes by, they could have problems getting it back to the bonding company if I decide not to pay them or going back to the owner to get their money. So, you know, my opinion was that they were just filing all this stuff to protect their position. Everybody knew they weren't going to get paid because they didn't fix it. And everybody knew nobody was paying anybody until they were satisfied. Because this was a big deal, I mean, a big deal. That they were talking initially about taking the unit off and replacing it. And not only does it cost a hundred and fifty dollars for the unit, a hundred and fifty thousand for the unit, but now you gotta pay the guy to take it off, and now you gotta pay the guy to put it back on. So it could be a two-hundred thousand dollar, you know, mistake. And whose mistake it was wasn't clear either. You know, the factory built it according to the specification, but the contractor argues that the specification isn't proper. And he got a bad spec. And then the engineer argues that, you know, somebody should have picked up on it before they built it. And the distributor, who, he was the one responsible for the shop during, if you will, which the shop during is sent to the factory. And that's exactly what they follow. That's, that's their bible when they build it. And, you know, they blamed it, they started pointing fingers at the distributor, saying he didn't spec it right, as far as the shop during. So it becomes a dispute. And everybody's involved. I mean, we're not getting paid either. It's not like we got paid and we didn't pay that.
Here's, so all, so for me, when you answer a question in an application as no, and there's three disputes, we'll call them, that resulted in some sort of adjudication process, it seems strange that you would answer no. That's all. That's it.
Well, if you think about it from my side of the street, we're not paid either. So you can't, you know, you can't say I have a debt and I'm setting a debt for something if nobody's paying for it. If the owner and the engineers are claiming that's defective and I'm not getting paid for it, how is that a debt? It's not. But I understand exactly what you're saying, but don't misunderstand me. You know, in hindsight, if I had known I was going to have to come down here and explain this, I would have said yes. And I would have given you those three cases. I would have said, these are the three cases. If you want, I'll explain them to you. But I didn't, and that's why I'm here. And my interpretation, you know, was, I guess, different than some people's.
So you had a dispute, but the dispute was over a debt, yes?
No, it wasn't a debt until it was settled. No, we didn't owe them the money for anything until it was settled. Nobody was paying for defective you. You wouldn't pay me for that. I mean, if I, when I built your firehouse, if you had a defective piece of equipment, you wouldn't pay for it.
But the dispute was still over a debt?
No, it was over defective equipment.
That needed to be paid for?
Ultimately. But they filed the dispute because they knew that they weren't going to get, they had to protect their position because they knew they weren't going to get paid for this equipment until it was fixed. You know, it's a lot of fingerpoint. You know, everybody says, contractor says it's the factory, the factory says it's the distributor, the distributor says it's the owner's engineer. And it goes around and around and around, then nobody gets paid. But it's not.
If I may, I think it might be, make this simpler, would you just tell them about your rights on your subcontract?
Our, our subcontractors paid when paid.
Is what?
Paid, paid when paid.
Paid when paid.
Everybody's, okay. So if you withhold money from me, I'm not liable to pay anybody. So if, for instance, this rooftop, you know, this is successful. Your engineer would have told you that there's a problem with the rooftop unit. And your, whoever approves the payment, right, which would have been the engineer and the architect, they would not have approved payment or they would have withheld money to protect your interest until this is fixed. And they would withhold enough money that they felt would cover you in the effect that if we all defaulted and everybody walked away and said, we're not coming back, you would have enough money in the contract to fix it yourself.
Can you also explain about defective work in your subcontract?
I'm sorry?
Explain about what your contract says about defective work.
Oh, you know, it's, it's right in the contract. It says that we're not, we're not liable to pay anyone for defective work until we're satisfied that it's been corrected.
So the asphalt job, that was defective work?
That was just overbilling. That was just a money grab. That was, we had, we wanted him to come out. I mean, that was simple. It was a two-inch overlay of a parking lot. You could see it. You could see where they tied it. You could take a tape measure and measure what they did. They refused to come down. And that's also in the emails. Earl said that they're not coming down to measure it, that they have load tickets. But the problem with that was two problems. One was they generated the load tickets. And the second problem was they were doing substantially more work for Ocean County College at that time. So there was no way to verify where this material went. And the fact that they changed the date. They called us up and they asked if they could move the date up to tomorrow because they were going down there to work for the college and wanted to do it. And we told them, yeah, let's just get it done, go ahead. But we had no one on site to count the tracks. So that was shame on me. That was, that was, you know, we should have told them, no, you gotta do it according to the schedule. But all that substantiated in the emails. I mean, it's, and also, we, we gave them a plan of what they had to do, what the requirement was. And they gave a contract based on so many tons of asphalt. When they finished the project, they billed us for an additional, I think, twenty-five percent more material. And they said they had to use it because the area was bigger, larger than what they initially contracted for. However, they wouldn't go down and field measure it. We field measured it and it was actually, it was less material than what the contract called for. So it was a dispute, but it ended up being a fifteen thousand dollar dispute. And at the end of the day, my attorney told me that we're going to spend more money in fees than we were paying them. So I said, all right, let's split the baby. We split the baby and everything. We paid them for the contract though, before we settled. The dispute was just over the additional money. We paid them for the initial contract.
Would you clarify for me, earlier you said something about the mechanic's lien and that happens all the time? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
I'm not an attorney, but this is my understanding. A lot of times contractors file a mechanic's lien at the beginning of the job. And my understanding is what they're doing is they're putting the owner on notice that they're going to be working on the project, supplying labor, material, you know, whatever their contracts were. So basically, it puts the owner on notice. Now, when we pay somebody, we have to get what they call release of liens, which is something they have to sign for each payment, saying that they've been paid for this work. And at the end, there's a final release of liens, which I have to give to you also, release of liens, saying that these liens, there's no liens on the job unless it's satisfied. A mechanic's lien doesn't really fall under that because a mechanic's lien is, I don't know, maybe you guys should answer this. My understanding of a mechanic's lien is just that they're putting the owner on notice, that they're performing work on your job. It's common.
Okay, if council members don't have any further questions, Mr. Wallace, I know you, I'm sorry, Mr. Bielkowski, I know you've jumped in on a couple of occasions to ask Mr. Wallace to clarify a few things. Do you have any further questions that you may wish to ask your client?
I just think for the mayor and council, being an attorney and practicing in the area of construction law, I can say, and I'm sure Fred would agree, the description that my client gave of mechanic's lien is not correct. You can't file a mechanic's lien until you're owed money. So it sounds like what he's talking about is a notice of intention. So I just want the record to be clear with regard to that. Under the law, you're not entitled to file a mechanic's lien until you're owed money. And Mr. Wallace is clearly talking about something that's filed before you even start work. So I think there is a disconnect or misunderstanding of what a mechanic's lien actually is.
What is a mechanic's lien? Why, you tell us.
A mechanic's lien is something that can be filed if in fact you haven't been paid money and it would be filed with the public owner. Service of that would have to also be made on the contractor. I don't know if Mr. Wallace could explain in this case, and I don't know whether it was actually served upon him. So he'd be never have known one was filed, notwithstanding the fact that it's being represented in a complaint. As I'm sure your board of attorneys will tell you, not everything represented in the complaint is accurate.
Yeah, I mean, that's the case. People make allegations and complaints.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
And I'm reading to Mr. Wallace what was in the complaints and to get his response to them. But I think we can all take notice of the fact that complaints aren't necessarily always accurate.
And do we have the answer here? And do we know why the answer to that allegation was? Because maybe that was denied from the answer.
I do not have the answer.
So we're a little shorthanded on that issue. And I just want to emphasize two points that Mr. Wallace made. First being that there is a clause in his contract, which is common in all construction contracts. It's called the contingent payment clause. They exist in two types, either as a pay if paid or pay when paid. And in either event, if you haven't been paid as a contractor for the work of the subcontractor, New Jersey law specifically says that clause says you don't owe that subcontractor any money yet. So there can't be a debt. A debt is for a sum certain. I spent a lot of time looking at the case law with regard to this and also looking at New Jersey statute and finally had a fallback on something called Black's Law Dictionary. In Black's Law Dictionary, a debt, a debt is for an amount that's a sum certain. Here we have three disputes where, where there is no debt and there will be no debt in any of those cases unless they had gone to trial and there was a judgment. I also want to mention or amplify something Mr. Wallace said with regard to his contract. And he has a clause in his contract, which I'm sure the city of Asbury Park has in their contract. They don't have to pay for defective work. So if Mr. Wallace or any other contractor performing work for the city of Asbury Park does defective work, you will rely on that clause that says we don't have to pay for defective work. So it's not a debt if in fact the work was defective and it pursuant to the contract doesn't have to be paid for. That same clause, according to Mr. Wallace today, exists in his subcontracts. So as a result, no money was owed as a result of that issue with regard to defective work on those two projects.
So you're saying a debt wouldn't incur until there was a judgment?
I'm saying that there was a dispute over the issue where Mr. Wallace had a legitimate, two-part legitimate argument. First, pay when paid or payeth paid says, I don't owe, as a contractor, money to a sub until the owner pays me. That's the law, I can assure you. I actually just won a case recently against one of the attorneys who filed this suit on that very issue. And the second issue is with regard to defective work. If a subcontract, like your contract specifically says defective work, you can hold back money for, it's not a debt. I understand what you were looking for, or I believe I understand what you were looking for. A situation where someone was validly due money and money was held back. That's not what happened here. It's not like there was a sub who's entitled to money and Mr. Wallace said, I'm just going to hold on to it. I'm going to use it. I'm going to go on vacation. That's not what happened here. You've had three disputed claims, which do not equal a debt.
And then we still have these three that are unanswered.
What do you mean, three unanswered?
From Toni Longo? Did I misunderstand?
No, I think Toni Longo specifically said, we have not substantiated any violations on all four cases that were brought to the attention by the city of Asbury Park. And she's a, let's look at her title. And I shared this with your council, so he's seen this. She's the Assistant Director, Wage and Hour, Contract Compliance. I wish we could have had more for you, but in light of the fact this was only given to us Friday afternoon, I think we've done our best to show that this allegation is not accurate.
I'll do things, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? No? Mr. Bielkowski or Mr. Wallace, anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. And we hope you understand, I hope you understood our answers. If anything wasn't understood, if you could, before we leave, this lets us know and we'll try to explain. If not, thank you for your time and we look forward to hearing from you.
All the emails Mr. Wallace referred to, we have a copy of those?
Sure.
I can get it.
Thank you. Send them to the attorney.
If you could send them to my attention, I can pass them on to your folks. That's fine.
I mean, within an hour.
It's more than an hour for me to get back to my office. So we will get into your attorney like tomorrow.
Okay.
And Ms. Longo represented that you could speak with her, and I'm sure if you wanted to speak with the public owners on any of those projects, you can speak with them also. We're not hiding anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna be opening this to the public, so if you want to stay and listen to public comments.
Thank you, but no thank you. There's been a smear campaign against my client since the start. I'm sure you just couldn't hear more of that. And our position with regard to that is, it's false.
Okay.
That's your prerogative, to stay or not to stay. You're welcome to stay.
We understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion open the meeting to the public? Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record. There'll be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
My name is Wancito Jones, 1222 and a half Monroe Avenue, lifelong resident of Asbury Park. I came here today to see about the awarding of the contract. When he's, I was laughing a little because when he said that about holding money, that mean that when somebody finished the project and he didn't pay him. If he paid him, if the project wasn't done right, he would have sued that person. The person had to sue him for the money. That's what happened. Well, anyway, I'm here to make, you know, to make sure that the laborers be a part of what go on in Asbury Park. We provide a good wage for people. We provide training. All of our residents go to school, and they learn training. I personally just saved somebody life in Perth Amboy High School. On the shop store there, somebody had a heart attack, and because of the training I was given from the union, I saved somebody's life, and I was awarded from Perth Amboy. Well, anyway, my main thing is to make sure that work here is for the residents and for people here. Little New York, I don't know if you know, but the locals, 33 started out in Neptune, New Jersey. A lot of members from Asbury Park was part of that local. We have a living wage for people. We have, we have insurance, we have annuity. It's good for the people. It's, we don't have a job, we have a career, and we make sure that the people of the city comes first. All the people that works with us is from basically Monmouth, Ocean County. And it's a fair wage, and if y'all, I would like for y'all to speak to people, to see our wages that come through when you work with the union, our training, we have facilities for people. Not only when we finish these jobs, our jobs can take people, our training, where the people from the city can take our training and become contractors theirself. But the union provide a great opportunity for people of the city. And I would like it if you just speak to some of the people from the union and see the difference from a non-union contractor and a union contractor. And what he was saying, those bids was that he didn't pay people at the end. It's like if you're, if somebody did a job that wasn't right, you would sue them, they would have to sue you. And that's what happened. He didn't pay the people after the job was done.
Thank you. What'd you say, Union 33?
77.
77. Is that the laborers?
Yes.
And, okay.
Local 77.
Right, the headquarters used to be on the old road right off of 35.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 343. I'm sorry, 343. We merged, it's 343, but we started out as that.
Where your headquarters were, I think you used to share the building with the painters here.
Yes, yes, we did.
But I was a member of the painters here many years ago, so I know the building.
Okay, you might be familiar that with Mr. Boelson and everybody that came out of there.
Thank you. I just have a question. May I ask you a question? Mayor? Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to know, you're Union Local again?
747.
747, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
77, I'm sorry, it changed. I'm sorry, it's 77. Local 77, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Building trades.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole Vecchione, and I'm the Director of Research at the Labor's Eastern Region Organizing Fund, of which Local 77 is part. I want to thank the council today for hearing our concerns about Wallace's bid for the new fire department headquarters. We believe that Wallace Brothers intentionally misrepresented their qualifications as a responsible bidder by falsifying information provided in their bid. By not reporting debts as required in their statement of experience, Wallace Brothers hid a pattern of repeated delinquencies and failures to timely meet financial and contractual obligations. The council should reject Wallace's bid. It failed to establish Wallace as qualified and responsible, and in fact, exposed their readiness to lie and cheat. Wallace Brothers claimed in the past three years the company had no outstanding debts, and I'm not going to belabor the point, we've been over extensive evidence of debts that were owed by Wallace Brothers. And I don't believe that Wallace can reasonably claim that excluding this information was an oversight. The time, attention, and cost of settling three separate suits cannot easily be forgotten. This falsification speaks to Wallace's overall credibility. It calls into question the accuracy of their whole response. These are only the debts that we know about because those contractors did file lawsuits. That created a public record of this bad behavior. It is completely possible that there are other contractors out there waiting to get paid, that there are workers out there waiting to get paid. Those are things we can't prove. If Asbury Park proceeds with Wallace on this project, it's possible that contractors and workers won't get paid here either. The council should not be in business with a company that submits false information. To ensure high-quality careers for residents like Wancito, you must ensure that the most responsible bidder is awarded the project. Public works should be an investment into our communities and create the best possible opportunities for residents. But this council must ensure a level playing field. A contractor offering decent pay and essential benefits cannot compete with someone who cheats and does not pay their bills. If you ignore Wallace's bid falsification, you will be signaling to other unscrupulous contractors that you can profit on public investment by lying and cheating. By failing to report its delinquencies and actively misrepresenting its financial history, Wallace gave itself an unfair advantage in the bidding process. You were denied the opportunity to actually review their financial history through this falsification. Re rejecting their bid is an opportunity for this council not only to secure a more responsible bidder, but to message to other exploitative contractors that we will not allow corruption in public procurement. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
What was your title again, one more time?
I'm the Director of Research, the Labor's Eastern Region Organizing Fund. We're located at One Tower Center in East Brunswick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
Motion to close.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.